At this time, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Village Board for December 13th, 2022. Can you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Cook, would you please call the roll?
President DeSimone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's seven.
At this time, we have a couple of presentations we'd like to make. The first one we would like to present is the Medal of Valor presentation. The Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Grand Lodge in Springfield has chosen Sergeant Michael P. Tac, Officer Steven Kataluski, Officer Patrick Scanlon, and Officer Christian Cassius as this year's Medal of Valor recipients for the heroic actions while on duty November 6th, 2021. Gentlemen, would you like to proceed?
There you go. Good job.
Good officer, Kataluski.
All of them, everyone?
Yeah.
First of all, we appreciate being invited here tonight to the village meeting. It's been the goal of the Illinois State FOP Lodge to recognize police officers all over the state when they do something heroic, life-saving, or valor. And we think it's an important program because all the negative police publicity has been coming out over the years. We think it's important that people realize what our officers really do every single day. So Officer Kataluski, let's come up here. Okay, in recognition for valor presented by the Board of Trustees at Illinois Fraternal Order of Police in the month of November in the year 2022, on November 6th, 2021, Officer Kataluski responded to the scene of a domestic violence incident with an armed suspect. Suspect ambushed and shot Officer Kataluski nine times, critically injuring him. Without hesitation, officers on the scene assisted in getting Officer Kataluski to safety and securing the scene. Officer Kataluski's courageous actions and dedication to duty brought distinct credit upon himself, the Bensonville Police Department, and the law enforcement profession. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your service.
It's my pleasure.
We give each one, and then we let everybody stand.
Okay. Kristin Casilla? Hey, Kristin. In recognition for valor, on November 6th, Officer Casilla responded to the scene of a domestic violence incident with an armed suspect. Without hesitation, Officer Casilla courageously assisted in getting Officer Kataluski to safety, rendered medical care, and secured the scene. Officer Casilla's heroic actions and dedication to duty brought distinct credit upon himself, the Bensonville Police Department, and the law enforcement profession.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Michael P. Tac? Okay, for valor presented by the Board of Trustees, on November 6th, 2021, Officer P. Tac responded to a scene of domestic violence incident with an armed suspect. Without hesitation, Officer P. Tac courageously assisted in getting Officer Kataluski to safety, rendered medical care, secured the scene. Officer P. Tac's heroic actions, dedication to duty, brought distinct credit upon himself, the Bensonville Police Department, and the law enforcement profession. Thank you so much. I appreciate your service. Okay, Patrick Scanlon? Congratulations. Patrick Scanlon for valor. On November 6th, 21, Officer Scanlon responded to a scene of domestic violence incident with an armed suspect. Without hesitation, Officer Scanlon courageously assisted in getting Officer Kataluski to safety, rendered medical care, secured the scene. Officer Scanlon's heroic actions and dedication to duty brought distinct credit upon himself, the Bensonville Police Department, and the law enforcement profession. Thank you so much.
Is that video? All right, thank you, guys.
If I could have your attention for just a second?
You might not be on.
May I have your attention, please? One of the reasons we asked the families to come up for this photo is the most overlooked portion of the police community is the families. And they have to live with the same fear that our police officers face every day. And I will say from the perspective of my own wife, I didn't realize how much it bothered her till I accepted a job with the state. And when I told her I was taking it, it's like the relief was evident. And we just don't realize that our families are going through exactly what our officers are going through, so it's only appropriate we recognize them. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to some orders of business. How about the holiday decorating contest winners for 2021? Do we have second runner-up 402 Marshall Road in the audience today?
Yeah, give it a second. I don't think anybody's here. We'll give it one second for it to clear up. Are your friends here today?
So this room clears out, I'll give a little bit of background. We had probably about a dozen entries this year for the holiday decorating contest. The Holiday Decorating Committee went through and viewed everyone, rated them. And then we also took our public feedback from Facebook and considered that in the vote tally. So tonight, we have the three top winners. I think most importantly, one of the coolest things we do is we make a map of all the houses that were submitted, so you can drive through the town. It's on our website. You can just make a clean trip through town with the kids and see all the beautiful lights, and it's a great little holiday tradition we've started here. So I'll hand it back to you when you're ready, Mayor, for the second runner-up.
So once again, the second runner-up is 402 Marshall Road.
Are they here tonight? I don't believe they're here.
First runner-up is 402 Barron Street. And the grand prize winner is 452 South Mason Street.
So we'll make sure to get all these.
Oh, we got them. They're here. Oh, good.
Thank you so much for your beautiful house. We'll have Mary take your picture now. Perfect. Awesome. Thank you so much for making that comment.
Yeah, no, I don't put that much work in there.
At this time, I would like to move to Village President's presentation of the State of the Village. So as we near the end of 2022, I want to take a moment to reflect on many demonstrations of our strength and how we continue to excel when we work together as a community. I know many of you have heard me say that we are Bensonville Strong, a phrase that holds a lot of meaning for many of us. Day after day, our residents have demonstrated that Bensonville Strong is who we are both as individuals and together. I am proud to be part of this community, proud of our accomplishments this past year, and excited about what is to come. First and foremost, I want to thank the village staff and the members of this council for their tireless work on behalf of our residents. We have an incredible team that works together with one goal: making this community a great place to live and work. I am grateful for how hard you work all day and work every single day. Our financial strength, since my first day in office, I made a commitment to our residents to strengthen our community's financial standing through responsible use of taxpayer dollars and transparent policies. As we can all understand, a financially strong community is one that provides residents and businesses the chance to excel. Year over year, we have maintained a high credit rating and reduced our total government debt by 22% since I took office. Over the last six years, we successfully reduced our debt by $13.1 million, meaning that Bensonville will continue to hold a strong financial position that helps support and attract businesses. Despite economic challenges this past year, we stayed focused on our responsibility to our residents, aiming to ease the burden on families whenever possible. I'm proud to say that we moved swiftly to do that. By voting to make excess payments to the Village of Bensonville Police Pension Fund, we effectively reduced the burden on taxpayers by $2.2 million. This will be used to minimize increases in your property tax, absorb the inflation rates, and provide increased funding available for vital village services. In an effort to be more proactive when responding to unforeseen events, this year, the Board also approved a new fund balance and reserve policy that increases the minimum reserve balance in the general fund from 25% to 40%. As a result, we have created a stabilizing cushion that will better protect our residents in the case of unanticipated emergencies. Infrastructure and the village's beautifications, with the help of our great Village Board, over the last year, we have been able to make substantial improvements, investment into our village infrastructure. We have focused on smart use of tax dollars while beautifying the community and improving infrastructure. Thanks to our Public Works Department, we planted 131 trees, deployed 177 new planter boxes throughout the community. This year, we completed nearly $7 million of roadway and utility construction improvements, including filling over 700 potholes, an achievement that I know we all can appreciate. Building upon our commitment to be proactive rather than reactive, this past spring, we successfully carried out the 2022 water main improvement project in the Northern Business District and along Medina, Brookwood, and Glendale Streets, installing new water mains, fire hydrants, and sidewalk replacements, among other installations. With the project complete, our team deeply appreciates our residents' patience during the construction period, and we will continue to work to limit roadway congestion for future improvement projects whenever possible. Safety. As a police officer, I understand the ability to feel safe in your home as you walk the streets at night is a component to living a quality of life and one that we have made a priority. While police departments across the country have struggled to remain fully staffed, Bensonville continues to provide the resources needed to ensure a safe community. And this year, we welcomed four new police officers to the team and achieved our full complement of 36 sworn police officers. For residents, this means more police on the streets every day and every night. I want to thank all of our village first responders for their sacrifice and dedication to keeping our community safe and secure. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge the moments that helped bring our community closer together this past year, where we saw many of our favorite events return to full scale. From the summer concerts to the famous Wilkes family Halloween display and many others, it was great to see so many residents join together to celebrate. Just earlier this month, we kicked off the holiday season with our Holiday Train event that generated over $10,000 in monetary donations and thousands of pounds of food to the Bensonville Wooddale Food Pantry. Another community staple this past March, the Edge Ice Arena welcomed over 3,000 fans for the AHAI Illinois State High School Hockey Championships, which is a tournament, which hosted the international skating championships, drawing over 750 international skaters from around the world. The event was truly an excitement to watch. These events draw visitors to our village who fill local stores, restaurants, and other establishments. On top of all this, we have also successfully improved the village's communications and enhanced our website to serve as better resource for the community. To date, we now receive 30,000 monthly visits, have 3,759 email and text subscribers, and have increased our reach to 12,172 followers across the social platforms. If you don't already, we encourage you to follow to keep up to date with the village news. Needless to say, it's been an incredible year. Looking ahead, we are very optimistic for what is to come in 2023. I believe it will bring new, exciting opportunities and see our community grow even stronger together. I'm truly honored to serve as your village president and appreciate this opportunity to talk with all of you. Once again, I want to thank personally this Village Board, Ann, Rosa, Nick, Marie, Mac, Armando, Nancy, for all the work that you guys do. Staff, thank you very, very much for all the hard work you guys put in, and thank the residents for believing in us and keeping us where we're at to serve them better. That will conclude our State of the Village address. Let's move on to public comment. We will move to the public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name.
Yes, we have two. Mr. Christopher McCullough?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Chris McCullough. I'm president of Bensonville School District Two, Board of Education. I'm also a member, of course, of our community. "We the people, we the people." This, of course, is an excerpt of the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution outlines our form of government: a representative, democratic republic, a form of government that empowers citizens by giving everyone a voice through their elected representatives, a form of government that has been protected by many, and many have given all to protect it, a form of government that necessitates constructive discourse and debate that finds failure in silence. I'll say that again. Finds failure in silence. Our municipal government must value the thoughts, dreams, and passions of our fellow community members. We do not want tactics of intimidation and bullying to guide the future of this community. We do not want our vulnerable populations jeopardized in attempts to consolidate the locus of decision-making authority. What we want is thought leadership. What we want is servant leadership that empowers the voices of all stakeholders. Meaningful and thoughtful discourse will yield the best outcomes for our community. A review of multiple years of past meeting minutes and observations from village meetings reveal little to no engagement from village trustees as a part of representing us, members of their community. We, the citizens of Bensonville, deserve to be and must be represented by our elected officials. We do not live in a kingdom, and we will not accept an autocracy. This community will not accept judication by a king and queen. I am sharing these remarks because I am grateful to be a resident of Bensonville, and I care deeply about all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda? Hami? Hami? Sorry.
Good evening. I live at 440 Judson Street, and my house is backed up to the alley. And on the corner of, like, Jefferson, there by the alley, there's a house that's always letting a car parked alongside there. And my concern is if an ambulance or a fire engine needed to get down there, they wouldn't get through. And my husband has very serious health conditions. So I just think it should be patrolled more so that they get a ticket or whatever, so they'll quit parking there.
Real quick, we'll definitely jump on this for you. Cars parked in the alley?
Yeah, alongside the house, but it's in the alleyway.
Okay.
Like my husband said, if a fire engine had to come through, they'd just have to plow the car down.
I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. We'll get to this and follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Curtis, can you go grab your phone number, please?
This will conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the November 15th, 2022 Village Board meeting?
You have a motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries and the minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in an amount of $9,870,546.69. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any modifications? Or, I'm sorry, is there any discussion to the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the warrant is approved. There are no items on the consent agenda under an administration. There's an ordinance of the Village of Bensonville, DuPage County, Illinois approving a consulting service agreement with S&amp;G Thor Consulting Corporation for the consulting services for 2023. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance? Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
I'll take this one, Your Honor. S&amp;G Thor has been providing special events consulting to the Village of Bensonville for several years. As you know, recently, we elevated our employee Steve Skersky from community liaison to community engagement coordinator. And one of those new responsibilities is special events. So he focuses with the seniors as well as special events. What that allows us to do is reduce S&amp;G Thor's contract significantly. S&amp;G will still be providing advisory services to Steve during this transition year, but Steve will be taking on the bulk of that work. So happy to report back a reduced contract size going into 2023.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries and ordinance passed. Very excited for it. Resolution approving the agreement with Avion Consultants LLC and the Village of Bensonville for consulting services for 2023. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, discussion, please.
This is renewal of an annual agreement with Avion Consultants. Avion is our airport noise consultant. The consultant, Ron Seymour, was quintessential in drafting the Fly Quiet Rotation Plan, which is currently under review with the FAA. If you recall, the previous administration had a very large federal lobbying contract. We eliminated that contract, retained the technical skills of Avion Consulting to replace that, reducing that contract by over 80%. So this is a very beneficial contract to us. The service rate has not increased since we began this, $100 an hour.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Three is a resolution authorizing a retail sales agreement with Avi Systems Incorporated for studio and control room relocation and senior center development and design services in the not-to-exceed amount of $22,514. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So this is a contract with Avi Systems. Avi, as their name may suggest, is our audiovisual consultants. You'll notice this room. You probably didn't notice unless you're very nerdy like me. Everything's much more clear. We just, Avi recently completed an upgrade of this room, so we now have full digital access on our cameras. The next part of their contract will be moving the studio from the basement up to the second floor as part of the remodel for the senior center. That move will maintain state-of-the-art equipment, so we turn out the best productions possible, and our multimedia team will be making that move with them. So this is the contract to make that move up here.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Four is a resolution authorizing a signature for a letter of support to DuPage County Health Department for central receiving center. Is there a motion to approve? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, discussion, please.
Pretty hopeful this is the start. This resolution tonight will be the start of something very important for the county. Throughout the pandemic, I grew pretty close with the DuPage County Health Department, as long as most city managers did. And in discussions post-pandemic, we're now talking about what else we can do, what we tackle next. Mental health is a huge issue in this country. Mental health is a huge issue in DuPage County. Your Honor, I think you know as a police officer, for a lot of the calls that we go to, be it medical or police calls, mental health is a component of that. And right now, there's not a good service for what to do with those individuals experiencing a mental health crisis. You can take them to jail, doesn't work out well there. You can take them to an ER, doesn't work out well there. Those are basically the only options. Central Receiving Center is the initiative by the DuPage County Health Department, which is going to try to fill that gap. So when someone is having a mental health crisis, police, paramedics will have an option of going to a central receiving location out in Wheaton, which has mental health professionals staffed 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, beds for mental health, voluntary inpatient commitments. The hope is that this is going to solve a lot of that people in crisis and get people the help they need, rather than just put them into a system that they can circulate around. Tonight, we're not committing any money. We're just saying that we like this idea of addressing mental health and having the health department do that. So tonight, this is a letter of support that signs off on that. This letter of support will be joined by other municipalities, police departments, fire departments, county health board, in joining to go out and receive funding to help fund this project.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Under finances, a resolution authorizing an agreement with MWM Consulting Group for actuary services for fiscal years 2022 and 2023. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Do I have a second? There being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Ms. McManus, please.
Yes, each year, the village is required to do two actuarial studies, one for the police pension and one for the other retiree benefits that we have. We have been with MWM for a while. Consistency matters when you're doing these actuarial studies in a lot of cases, so we're recommending approval of a new contract for the 2022 and 2023 years at the price of $12,000 and $9,250, respectively.
Any questions from the board? Please call the rolls. Please call the rolls.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Two is a resolution establishing the refuse recycling and yard waste rates with Republic Services for the Village of Bensonville effective January 1, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, do we have any discussion?
Ms. McManus.
Yes, we are in the last year of our contract with Republic Services. It calls for a 3% cost payment adjustment to them every year. We incorporated in budget a corresponding 3% increase of rates. This takes care of that 3%. Each regular individual, non-senior, will see a 77 cent increase per month, and each senior will see a 66 cent per month increase.
Any questions from the board?
Just to clarify, this is a contractual increase that was already, so it's going through. We just pass it along through both the budget gap.
Seeing no questions, please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. There is no report on the police department, on their public works, a resolution authorizing the execution of the PACE Paratransit Local Sharing Agreement for participation in the 2023 Ride DuPage Program. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Yes. The Ride DuPage Program is run in partnership with PACE and offers 24/7 service to our senior and disabled residents. Currently, over 240 residents of Bensonville are registered in this program. The village averages approximately 800 rides each year at a monthly cost of approximately $1,500. We do expect some increases in our cost share due to increasing labor rates within the PACE system. We budgeted $25,000 for the program in 2023. Staff recommends approval of this agreement with PACE to keep our program running in Bensonville.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number two, resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order to Al Warren Oil Company Incorporated to provide fuel tank rental and fleet fueling services in the not-to-exceed amount of $245,750. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Yes. The village uses 44,000 gallons of unleaded and over 20,000 gallons of diesel fuel each year to keep our fleet running. Warren Oil has been our fuel supplier for nearly 10 years. The cost of the fuel is based on the Opus average rack rate plus a 10 cent per gallon surcharge. The surcharge includes the delivery charge as well as the rental of three 2,500-gallon above-ground storage tanks. The renting of these tanks eliminates the capital and operational costs of owning our own tanks, as well as eliminates the liability of underground storage tanks and potential future cleanup. The cost of fuel can fluctuate significantly from year to year, as we've seen over the past few years. In 2023, we budgeted $245,750 for fuel across all departments. Staff recommends approval of this extension with Al Warren Oil for 2023.
Any questions from our board?
I just do want to point out, part of the budget discussions that came out of this board is you guys wanted us to explore electric vehicles and trying to get our gas costs under control. So as you remember, we included our first two purchases, electric vehicles for Public Works. These are non-snow vehicles. We're starting off with just the maintenance vehicles first. And so hopefully, this is the start of bringing our gasoline costs under control and being able to stabilize our budget.
Thank you. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Three is a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order with T-Mobile for the GPS tracking services in the not-to-exceed amount of $13,000. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Yes. The village monitors our fleet through GPS units from time to time in order to improve efficiency, respond to resident inquiries, and to track history of other vehicles. The GPS government platform through T-Mobile provides the most economical system for the village, costing only $12.60 per vehicle per month. The village currently monitors 80 vehicles across three departments, which is Public Works, Police, and CED. This equates to an annual cost of approximately $13,000. Staff recommends approval of this purchase order to continue our GPS program.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved.